Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is December 3, 2018, and this is a Rowan County Commission meeting. And we appreciate you being here this afternoon. Kind of reflect back on four years ago, I think we had a packed house. So I don't know if we're boring people to death. Maybe we ought to stir something up to get folks out of here. But it's good to have everyone here today. It is the tradition of this board and thousands of boards across this nation that we begin our meeting with a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance, but one thing we'll do is we'll have an opening prayer that's brought by our chaplain. This is called a solemnizing prayer, and that means that these prayers are for the commissioners themselves. I'm sorry, they're not for you. They're for us, and what we do here each day, each meeting, we take very seriously. And so we ask for wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of this community. And so we'll ask our chaplain to come forward. And commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for the privilege today to come, and on behalf of our county commissioners, we thank for them and the work they do and the dedication they have, Lord, and we pray you will just bless them and give them the wisdom they need, Lord. And we thank you, Lord, as we approach a new year, Lord, as we thank you for this county, Lord, and things need to take place. Guide and direct them, Lord, to make the right decisions, dear Lord. Thank for those who are gathered here today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, for being with us today, as always. All right, commissioners, we have the minutes been provided for us of November 19, 2018. Is that a misprint? You have November 19 and November 19. Oh, closed session minutes. Uh, we're approving closed session and open session? Okay. All right. Motion to approve closed session minutes.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we are going to adjourn this board. We've got some things that we've got to do. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where do you want us? Stay there?
One at a time. I see.
All right, before I call him up, I just want to say congratulations to the three of you for your reelection, and to the whole board, thank you for what you do for the citizens of this county. I know it's a... Sometimes you don't feel like you're appreciated enough, but what you do for this county, people just don't realize what you go through and what you do. So I want to thank you personally for what you do for this county. Ms. Klusman, I'm going to call you up first, if you'll come around, if you've got anybody that you want to come forward with you.
Yes. Your place left, and raise your right. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Judith Klusman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of the United States.
The constitutional laws of the United States.
And constitutional laws of North Carolina.
And the constitutional laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a commissioner of Rowan County.
As a commissioner of Rowan County.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And she will come back around.
Got it. We have another job. Oh, that's right, I got to do this.
You've got to hand this over.
Promise not to stick you in the boob. Can't have this be totally all boo hoo. It's got to be some, give us a kick sometimes.
That's right. That's right. Okay, so...
She will sign both of those. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Reed.
Your place left, raise your right.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Greg Reed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of North Carolina.
The constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And she will sign both of those. On you. Keep the process up. And Mr. Green.
Your place left, raise your right.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jim Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of North Carolina.
The constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And she will sign both of those. On you. Keep the process up. And Mr. Green.
Your place left, raise your right.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jim Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of the United States.
Constitution of laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And she will sign both of those. On you. Keep the process up. And Mr. Green.
Your place left, raise your right.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jim Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of the United States.
Constitution of laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And she will sign both of those. On you. Keep the process up. And Mr. Green.
Your place left, raise your right.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jim Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
Constitutional laws of the United States.
Constitution of laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
As a county commissioner of Rowan County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And she will sign both of those. Yes, sir. I appreciate you, I couldn't see you. There was another one. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and elect you. We're going to go ahead and elect the officers.
Since we've got reconvened first.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, he was reading it, I just didn't look.
All right, I'm going to reconvene our meeting now for the purposes of electing our officers for this upcoming year. Thank you and congratulations to the three incumbents who were reelected. It's a pleasure serving you the past four years. I look forward to serving you in the future. So at this point, I will open the floor for nominations for chairperson of the County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Greg Eds for chair.
Any further nominations?
Move to close.
Hearing no further nominations, Mr. Eds will be elected by acclamation. I will now open the floor for nominations for vice chairperson of the County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Jim Green.
Any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, Vice Chairman Green, welcome back. You're elected by acclamation. I'll hand the meeting over to the chairman.
Thank you. We'll save speeches for later. Well, no, we do need to thank a few folks and would like to give fellow commissioners an opportunity. Would, first of all, like to thank my wife, who is my better, as I describe her, my better eighty percent. I'm not even as high as half of that good relationship, but she is all wise counsel and my strength and allows me to do this. And we have married off our three children in the last eighteen months. So looking forward to some us time. I just don't know when that'll be, but certainly looking forward to that. But she's the best thing that ever happened to me, and I'm just thankful every day for her wise counsel and for her patience. I want to thank Aaron Church, who is not able to be here. He's got some things going on today that he couldn't avoid. And thankful to commissioners that hired him. He is a real asset for this community, and we trust him implicitly. And he does such a good job, and for his team that he has, you guys really make us look as good as we can possibly look. And I want to thank the directors for each of the departments and all the work that you do. Appreciate you, a lot of you being here today. And Sheriff, and your assistance, thank you for keeping our community safer and safer and appreciate everything you do. Also want to thank Carolyn, she does a good job for us. Jay keeps us out of jail, for the most part. We'll see what the next four years does. But would like to thank our fellow commissioners. You know, it's no secret, we've had different ideas over the past few years. But I just want to say that, and I say this with as much passion as I can muster, I value, I value every commissioner that's here because we are all so different, and we bring such a different view and passions and talents to this board that we've been able to get a lot of stuff done. And Mike is one of the kindest men that I've ever known in my life, and he has a real passion for our emergency services folks. He keeps us posted on that, police and fire and all that, and Mike is just a good man. And I appreciate his counsel and for his support. And, you know, I'll still say, four years later, we didn't know how we'd get along with Judy. But the fact is Judy has been a great addition to this board, and she does a lot of the stuff that we don't want to do because she is really passionate about it, and she fills out this team very well. Mr. Green has... We sat down before running four years ago, and Jim and I have known each other a long time. It's funny, I said four years ago, if you can get us elected, insurance guys, get along with everyone. And certainly, Jim, this has been one of the joys of my life, is getting to serve with this guy, and I really appreciate him and have grown to love him, and I appreciate your... I'm not even going to take any age shots. And Mr. Pierce and I have known each other for a long time, and I'm very proud and honored to call Craig Pierce my friend. And we've worked together for the party for years. He's got a business that our businesses are kind of connected. In fact, just this week, I was in Florida, this past week was in Florida for a funeral, and I was able to call Craig and have him take care of a client of mine. And Craig is a good man, and I appreciate Craig's passion, and he brings a lot of knowledge to this community, and I hope you guys appreciate what he does. And Craig, I appreciate you. And so I'm looking forward to four more years of working with you guys, and again, I value each of you tremendously as individuals, as friends, and also as fellow commissioners. So I didn't know who would return after our little shoiree downstairs. I wanted to make sure to get some of that in there. Mr. Vice Chairman.
After all those things you said about your wife, I would like to say that I also appreciate my wife so much, and she is, what would you say, eighty percent? Well, I really do appreciate all the things that she has done to allow me to do this. And I'm not kidding, well, I'm always kidding about everything, but she has been a great source of information, whether I wanted it or not. And so, thank you so much for what you've done. To the rest of my family, Jimmy and Elizabeth and Adam and their spouses, Jimmy comes to the top of the list now because he showed up today, and the rest of them actually have to work for a living. And so, but family is the most important thing in my life, other than my faith, and I appreciate them being there at all times for us. Seriously, the county runs so well under the leadership of Aaron Church and Leslie Hydrick and the department heads that are there. I was a skeptic when I first took this office, being a skeptic of all big government. You just think of wasted money and you wasted time and too many employees doing certain jobs. And I've gone, I have come to the realization that we have a great group of folks, not just in leadership, but even in the employees that are so dedicated to this county, and I want to thank them for what they do, day in and day out. Our partners, the school system, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, which I still say is one of the biggest assets that we have in this community, and the way that we have worked together with them the last four years, we hope to have as good a relationship in the coming years. A lot of decisions and a lot of things that need to be made. But our commissioners, I'd also like to thank you for, as we came in and accepting that we would have a learning curve, which we did, but it has been great working with these folks, and each of them have passions that they take on and do a great job with. And to people of Rowan County, the only thing that I will say that I am really proud of is that I spent less money for almost the same votes as the other three that are running this time. So on that note, I will end, and thank you very much for allowing me to have this job.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving us this opportunity to speak briefly. I want to thank all of our staff. I mean, I've gotten to know so many of you, and it's just been a real privilege. And thank Aaron and Leslie especially for heading up, what are eight hundred plus employees? We do have a wonderful, wonderful staff, and it's just amazing to see what they can get done with the resources that they're given. You know, I don't have family right here in Salisbury, you know, that Wisconsin kid that moved south. And so my friends are my family, and I'm so glad that my friend Connie could be here today. We actually met a number of years ago before I ran the first time knitting together, which might seem very strange, but I have met so many wonderful people all over the county, and I want to say especially my faith family because they are there for me all the time. And I want to say too that to thank both the private and public partners that we have in doing this job. This is not an easy job, and to make our county a stellar county here in this state, it's going to take all of us together to make that happen. I know that in the legislature up in Wisconsin, I have friends that I have developed for life, and I know that the people here, sitting up front with me and us working together, that they will be friends for life too. So thank you, all my commissioner colleagues, and thank you to the public, to the citizens, for allowing me to continue to serve you. Thank you.
Mike, anything?
No, I can't really add anything. I can hear everything that you've guys said, and I've enjoyed working with all of you, serving the people the last four years, and I just look forward to what we might be able to do in the next couple of years.
Thanks, Mike, Craig, anything?
I'm just glad I finally got you guys trained to get some stuff done.
That is good.
We do have a lot of varied opinions, but we always seem to hit common ground and work out what's best for the county. And I'm very excited about our partnering with Conaplis for the water and sewer project down at the new Old Betis Ford interchange. I think it's going to be a big boost to the economy here. I think you're going to see the county as a whole change in a terrific way, and I'm very excited to be here for two more years to see that happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. Thank all of you for coming today. We're going to adjourn for a reception downstairs. Before we do that, I did want to thank my friend and brother, Tony Hall, Pastor Tony Hall, for coming and joining us. Tony is a friend of everybody up here, and we've known Tony for about eight years now, and he's just a great guy and a source of wisdom for all of us. So thank you, Tony, for being here. So we'll adjourn for now?
Recession.
Recession? All right, we'll recess, and we'll pick it back... How long do we need? Fifteen minutes? Yeah, let's make it fifteen minutes. So let's call it three thirty, so we'll reconvene at three forty-five. Is that plenty? Okay? Thank you. All right, we'll reconvene, and so welcome back, and thank you for the refreshments. Madam Clerk, good job. We're the part of additions to the agenda. I've got a couple of additions. You've been provided with a note from Franklin Barnes, our Rowan Transit Director, to add an item requesting hearing for fiscal year 2020 transportation grant application, so I'll add that as a consent item in. And then also would like to add a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, for attorney-client privilege. So I have those two additions. Is there, are there any other additions or deletions? All right, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the consent agenda has been provided for us as amended. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll move on to a public comment. Our esteemed sheriff.
I'll be brief. Kevin Alton, 405 Travis Lane, Salisbury. First of all, congratulations to the three winners of the election. I look forward to working with all of you. I'm blessed. I talked to other sheriffs, and it's not like it is here. We're blessed, and I appreciate the working relationship I have with all five of you and the way you support the agency, so thank you. Second, as you know, I was sworn in this morning, and I just want to touch base real quick on what I told the troops this morning, so you'll know. There's a lot of rumors that I plan on retiring in a year or two. I thought about it real long and hard, but I've talked to my mother, who reminded me of what my father would say, so I fully intend to finish this term that I was just sworn in this morning, but definitely that will be all she wrote. I've been doing it thirty-one years, that'll make thirty-five, so... But I'm going to be with you for four years, and then I promise you won't have to put up with me anymore. But I wanted you to hear it because there were so many things going around the office that I just wanted to end it today. I saw what the agency went through in 2009 when Sheriff Wilhelm retired, and I didn't want to put the agency through that. That's another thing that played on my mind. It is costing me money to come to work, but I didn't get into this job for the money. I'm not going to get out of it for the money. So I'm going to do what the best I can do for the next four years, but thank you for your support.
Thank you, Sheriff. I, well, yeah. I don't think there's any question that you could be the sheriff of this county until you're 147, but we...
Five years.
That's only five years? We got them trained to make their own age jokes now, Jim. That's good. Well, thank you and congratulations, Sheriff. All right, item number three on the agenda is... Is Kevin here? I don't... We've got the 2019 Schedule of Values and the 2019 Present Use Schedule of Values need to be approved by the board. We had our public hearing last week, and then coming back today to vote on that. Counsel, is there anything else we need to do other than to vote on this?
That's it.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the 2019 Schedule of Values and Present Use Values?
So moved.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Or if there is none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number four, discussion regarding annual planning retreat. So let's see, 2019. I think this will be an important one this year. I think we're kind of rolling pretty well, so setting some goals for 2019 will be a big part of our year this year. So I think we just need one day. You want to do it on a Friday? The Friday work for every... How about...
Can we do it?
I wish Aaron, has Aaron given you any instructions? I mean, how about January either 18th or 25th? Is that enough time? Well, that's almost, that's a month and a half to plan it. Does eight... Well, how about 25th? 25th work?
I think that would work better for me.
That'll work better? 25th?
That's not going to work for me.
Okay.
I can do the 18th if you need to do that.
18 work for you, Jim?
And I'm open.
Craig?
Me too, whatever.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll plan on the 18th, and we'll get that info to the county manager, okay?
We're going to have it here?
Yes. Time... Okay, yeah, 8:30 to 3:00 or 4:00, whatever, until... Okay? No, we really need to vote on anything on that, do we?
Thank you, Sheriff. I don't think there's any question that you could be the sheriff of this county until you're 147.
Five years.
That's only five years? We got them trained to make their own age jokes now, Jim. That's good. Well, thank you and congratulations, Sheriff. All right, item number three on the agenda is, is Kevin here? We've got the 2019 Schedule of Values and the 2019 Present Use Schedule of Values need to be approved by the board. We had our public hearing last week, and then coming back today to vote on that. Counsel, is there anything else we need to do other than to vote on this?
That's it.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the 2019 Schedule of Values and Present Use Values?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Or if there is none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number four, discussion regarding annual planning retreat. So, let's see, 2019. I think this will be an important one this year. I think we're kind of rolling pretty well, so setting some goals for 2019 will be a big part of our year this year. So, I think we just need one day. You want to do it on a Friday? The Friday work for every, how about, I wish Aaron, has Aaron given you any instructions? I mean, how about January, either 18th or 25th? Is that enough time? Well, that's almost, that's a month and a half to plan it. Does eight, well, how about 25th? 25th work?
That'd work better for me.
That'd work better? 25th?
That's not going to work for me.
Okay.
I can do the 18th if you need to do that.
18 work for you, Jim?
Craig?
Me too, whatever.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll plan on the 18th, and we'll get that info to the county manager, okay? Yes. Uh, time? Okay, yeah, 8:30 to 3:00 or 4:00, whatever, until, okay? No, we really need to vote on anything on that, do we? All right. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 18th for our annual planning retreat?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, budget amendments. Item number five was provided for us. Motion to approve the budget amendments is provided.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board appointments. So, there's a Dangerous Dog Appeals Board. There's an at-large vacancy, and Tina Akri has applied. Do we have a motion to approve Tina?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Public Health, vacancy for registered nurse. Following applications have been received. Patricia Yost and Kimberly Robinson. Do we have a motion for one of those two?
No, we need both of them.
Oh, we do?
Yes. And then, we need also Ms. Dr. Abad.
Okay, so, motion to, well, let's see, then, Dr. Abad has applied for reappointment, okay, as a member of the general public. So, there's three of them then, Patricia Yost, Kimberly Robinson, and Dr. Abad. Motion for those three?
Mr. Chairman, it says there's one vacancy. It doesn't say that there's two for the registered nurse.
One vacancy, yes. So, we'll need to pick between Patricia Yost and Kimberly Robinson.
I nominate Patricia Yost.
For reappointment? All right, do we have a second?
She's our chair.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dr. Abad, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Home Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, Jennifer Hammond's term is up. Will expire December 31st. She's applied for reappointment as an at-large member. A correction to that, her term, if reappointed, will expire in June 30th, 2021. Your record shows 19, but that'll be 2021. So, do we have a motion for that, for Jennifer Hammond?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, the board is asked to approve the new staggered terms for current committee members of Mary Frances Edens, Peggy Price, and Christina Joyce, in accordance with committee bylaw amendments listed for approval by the consent on this date. And so, Frances Edens, her new term would expire on June 30th. Peggy Price, June 20th, 2020. And Christina Joyce, new expiration date would be 2020. So, we have a motion to approve that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JCPC, Sheriff Alton has reapplied for appointment. And District Attorney Brandy Cook has applied for reappointment. And Judge Randolph has applied to serve as the judge, as Charlie Brown's designee. So, do we have a motion to approve those three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Sylvia Fosha's term expired on June 30th, but she's continued, and so, she's applied for reappointment as an at-large member, and she'll serve a three-year term. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rescue Squad Board, Ken Upright's term expires December 31st. He's applied for reappointment. And Commissioner Caskey, his term will expire on December 31st as well. He wishes to continue. And Adam Sewell has applied to serve as a member of the community. And so, do we have, let's see here, boards asked to ratify a term ending, Ms. Lee's appointed, I'll go there. All right, so we have, let's vote on those three. Do we have a motion to approve those three?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, let me see, the board's asked to ratify a term ending date for, okay, so, Mr. Lee's, his service on the Emergency Planning Committee will continue by virtuous, so we don't need to vote on that. Okay. Run Public Library Board, Julia Gaskyone has applied for reappointment as an at-large member. So, do we have a motion to approve Lillian?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are two at-large vacancies, and the following applications have been received. Pam Bloom, Krista Schwartz, and Jennifer Nicholson. And so, we need a motion for two of those three.
I nominate Pam Bloom and Jennifer Nicholson.
That's what I was going to do.
Is that what you want? All right, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
TDA, Commissioner Pierce's term expired on November 30th. He wishes to continue in his service as county commissioner on the tourism authority. If reappointed, they will serve two-year term beginning December 1st, ending November 30th. Want to make a motion on that?
So moved.
All right, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Volunteer Fire Department Relief Fund Board of Trustees. All right, the board is asked to consider two appointments for each volunteer fire department listed below, and all appointments are for two years and expiring December 31st, 2020. So, we've got Atwell, Steve Garner for reappointment, and Ryan Michael Yost. Boston Heights is Jason Corrier for reappointment, and Charles Haas. Cleveland Community is Ron Heron. Let's see, so let's vote on those three. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see. Ellis Crossroad, Thurman Wells, Enicville, Diane Bernie, Franklin, Jennifer Spry, and Carter Thomason. Locke is David Linker and James Basinger. Miller Ferry is David Oakley and Michael Alagud. Do we have a motion to approve all of those?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, then, in Scotch Irish is Ryan Thompson and Michael Astrop. South Salisbury, Gary Gasky, Michael Goodman. Union is Rick Waller, Kevin Kessler, Wes Rowan, Lonnie Mills, and Philip Sloop. And Woodleaf is Joseph Gregory and Artie Watson. Do we have a motion to approve all of those?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, we have some decisions to make because we get two appointments for each volunteer fire department. So, for East Gold Hill, we have Randy Earnhardt, Timothy Pruitt, and Kenneth Souther. Do we have a motion for two of those three?
I nominate Randy Earnhardt and Kenneth Souther.
All right, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. For Poole Town, we have Alan Thomas Shin, Tom Stoner, and Tina Barclay. Do we have a motion for two of those?
I nominate Alan Shin and Tina Barclay.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rockwell Rural is Ben Pierce, Troy Agner, and Mackenzie Holshouser. Do we have a motion for two of those three?
Nominate Troy Agner and Mackenzie Holshouser.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Volunteer Fire Department Commissioner Appointments. Let's see, for the Cleveland Community, Craig Myers for reappointment, and Claude Rogers Jr. A motion to accept those two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Scotch Irish, Grady Thompson served as a fire commissioner since '15, but he is now deceased. Jason Bogers applied to fulfill the remainder of that term, which will run until March 31st of 2019. And so, we have a motion to approve Grady Thompson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need a nomination for two, and Wes Rowan, Larry Graham for reappointment, Jennifer McDaniel, and Danny Ellenberg. Do we have a motion, or a nomination for two of those three?
I nominate Jennifer McDaniel and Danny Ellenberg.
Very good. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What are we missing? That was a lot.
Let's go back to Mr. Lee's and just, we could just ratify that.
I was on the rescue squad. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, were we now appointing three fire commissioners per department?
Yeah, you know, I got into the habit of two, and I'm very sorry. You're exactly right. It's three appointments. So, we're good in Cleveland, we're good in Scotch Irish, but we would need a motion also approve Larry Graham for reappointment and Wes Rowan.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
That was the other.
Oh, that's the other one.
Yeah. All right, so, where were we on Rescue Squad? All right, we are asked to ratify the term ending date for Emergency Services Director Chris Lee's. Do we have a motion to ratify that term ending date?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does that do it? Okay. All right, so, do we have a motion to enter closed session then?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get started as soon as we clear the room, and again, thank you for coming. All right, we're back at a closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
Okay, good deal.